We'll call it April 17, 2019 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order at 7:02. In attendance are Supervisors Day, Morris, and Schneider. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Township Engineer Pete Eisenbaum, Harman Starkel Commission Chair Paul Legasi, and Township Manager Joan McLaw, and Secretary Sharon Norris, and approximately one member of the public here. We'll stand for resolution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. If there's anything relating to items on tonight's agenda, the last public comment is for items not on tonight's agenda. It's important that you state your name clearly for the tape so the comments can be reflected accurately. Please state whether you're a township resident or taxpayer. Since we have such a small group here tonight, we will take comments during the meeting after the board supervisors discuss the issue.
We saved you a cheer.
Right here.
Yeah, that's probably similar. That's a little intimidating.
Yeah.
We don't mean for it to be that simple.
Okay, Nancy, let's start the second one there.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the March 20 of 2019 Version 2 Meeting Minutes as presented by the Township Secretaries. I'll second that. Done. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries 4-2-0.
Okay, move to the next one. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2019-10 regarding disposition of records for the Board of Supervisor meeting, March 20, 2019.
I'll second that.
Next, taken by David. Any discussion? This is a pretty standard motion to be able to raise the tape. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries 4-0.
Okay. I make a motion that the Board approve the March Treasury Report, which includes the following dispersments: The General Fund of Dispersments and Transfers of $2,2,318.88. Park and Recreation Fund with dispersments of $55,484.78. Open Space Fund with dispersments of $6,553.17. Emergency Services Fund with dispersments of $39,496.89. Fire Hydrant Fund with dispersments of $580.80. Leading up balance in all funds totaling $570,009.7.
I'll second. Good, you did that.
Done. That was a real test of my reading skills.
You did good.
All right. Any comments? Upgrades on the Treasury Report? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries 4-0.
Next is the March Zoning Officer's Report. No motion is needed. Permits issued were 10, building inspections 23. The building fees collected $2,799.28. Recreation of the space impact zero. Miscellaneous fees 17.85. And there were two zoning issues reported. Anyone give us an update on that?
3327 Appleton Road. We're still waiting to hear from the judge. Court of Complains.
So that's no change from the...
That's what we saw on the...
And 1620 New London Road. The owner of that property has notified the township that he planned to make a change of use to go back to a single use, a use by right, and he has submitted a zoning application to Jeff Vogels. And he has an engineer working on a stormwater plan. And it's my understanding that he's having a property survey so that he could define his property area.
Okay. So Joan, just to clarify, because it's a use by right, there's no need for him to come back to the Board? He's just had to fill out the proper paperwork with the zoning board?
Strictly what I...
At Jeff Vogels. Right, and then which is what he's doing?
Yes.
And then that issue will be resolved?
Yes.
And then one question to Mark, one of the first, the Appleton. Does it do any good to call the judge and say where we're at? Or do you just have to...
Not permitted to.
Oh, you're not allowed? Not even like you could, you're just not permitted to?
He's a senior judge, and our experience is that it takes a couple of months to get decisions out, but I don't think that's any different than any other judge.
Okay, I was just surprised it would take that long.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be by the summer. Because we've had several cases before him since the case that Franklin had before him. So he's constantly issuing decisions.
Nancy, you want to just do the next two?
Sure. So the PC did not need made, so there's nothing to report. And then the Chairman of the HRC is here, and so Paul will report on the April 2 meeting. These committees submitted both their end reports to the Board, and I included you both.
So I'll begin by giving a reading of the board, and then if there's any discussion during that meeting, we can turn to vote. We have our first formal joint meeting of the HRC and Historical Commission in an attempt to somewhat streamline our meetings since we have a large overlap in membership and we're often repeating some of the same information. So we just basically, if there are things that have to be decided by one set of members together, we separate out that decision in a voting process, but otherwise it overlaps nicely. It seems to have gone well. We approved both annual reports at that meeting. And then we just did really a relatively brief review of the several items that have been before the Board several times. One was the review of 896 and the Walkable Village. And mostly with respect to that, we were talking about Section 106, Evaluation of Historic Properties, which is largely complete. And I may have mentioned the last time we were here that it resulted in two additional, I think they did two additional National Register eligible determinations involving 896. One item is outstanding, and that concerns the PHMC's response to Pendott's determination that there was not an area along 896 that might qualify as a rural historic district. I was expecting that to be wrapped up in mid-April, but the PHMC had asked Pendott to resubmit the review with changed boundaries that was posted in mid-April. And so that should be wrapped up now in mid-May, assuming that something else... And it's my understanding that that would then end the historic review process when that happens. We also discussed the Churchill-Affordman Cemetery. There's really nothing perfect to report on that except that I want to do some property D research up at the Archives before moving that further along. And so that may take a magnitude or more, depending upon how time works out. We also reviewed the Historic Resources Map. The Township has now printed out a couple of large copies of this map for us to do the work on, and we've determined the known changes to the map that are not part of our current Historic Resource surveys. There are a handful of those. There are a couple of demolitions. There are the two new Class 1 properties along 896. And there's also the Churchill-Affordman Cemetery, which was not included in the original Historic Resource survey. So those will be added to the map. Finally, for the general business, we talked about the new Historic Commission website, which is sort of up and running. I'm going to be meeting with Franklin Morris so that I can figure out how to do updates on my own going forward. We want to do a few tweaks and that sort of thing. But if you go to, I believe there's a link now from the Township website. If you go to that, you can access 19 historic maps that are in the public domain, as well as histories of the Township, and we'll be expanding what's available at any time. Finally, we have the COA application that's before the, for tonight. And I would just like to mention in closing that on May 9, we will have a talk in New London that we're co-sponsoring with the New London Area Historical Society entitled "Newland Bristmill: Serving the Community for Over Three Centuries." And the speaker will be Tony Chahan, who's the Director of the History.
Where is the Newland Bristmill?
The Newland, it's, I can't prescribe actual where that is, but it's like further, it's more up toward the Glen Mill area.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
I couldn't tell you exactly what road it's on.
Yeah, it's not around here, right?
Yeah, it's not around here. Now, one of the things I was hoping to do was if they had, if they actually did some grinding, graining to just make some sample bread from it and have it available, but that's not really an option.
No, they don't do that anymore?
They don't, like, the Millen and Selma does that a couple of ways. They don't do that, at least not on a force scale, force scale basis. So, yeah, so that should be interesting. And Tony Chahan has an interesting background. He brings to managing Bristmill both an education background in terms of his college, sort of college training and his education there, as well as a very practical background since he was the son of a carpenter and cabin maker and worked with his dad growing up. So he has both the perspective of a history maker and a carpenter.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions, Howie?
Business. So Joan, do you want to review the motion?
Yeah, let's just go through these, because I think they're pretty quick.
Okay.
First, next to a pretty quick motion, so...
So this is the certificate of appropriateness that Paul was referencing. So I make a motion that the Board grant a certificate of appropriateness for the roof repair at 3301 Appleton Road on the findings that this application is in compliance with Sections A-E of the Secretary of Interior Standards, noting that Sections F through J of the standards are not applicable, and the proposed work is in keeping with the current appearance of the structure and has no effect on the historical character of the structure and or its environment.
I'll second.
So any discussion?
I think the guy had, his roof went bad on him, right?
Right.
Yeah.
He had to replace it in an emergency, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure of all the details, but I know that they were, they needed to replace it. I think they got ahead of the game a little bit, and so they ended up coming in for a COA lay, but there were really no issues.
You have no problem with that?
Nancy, for most roof replacements, when you're talking about replacing either life with life or life with something very similar, which by that I mean moving from a, you know, you're moving through a three-tap to an architectural single, which is often more desirable with three-tap? These are 36.
Very similar to them.
Yeah, I guess under emergency circumstances, they're allowed to replace it without a review and then come in with a review?
If you have, if you have a leaking roof, that sort of thing, you're allowed to start work immediately?
Don't they have to come in and talk to Jeff about it, or...?
Yeah, I think things got a little mixed up with this one. I'm not really sure how it progressed, but...
Well, they say it was leaking badly, and then they bought it.
Yeah.
So they bought the place and saw no problems, I guess.
You didn't have any issues with the material you selected?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, like I said, it's really very straightforward. They used something very similar, something that was already there. They used something that's very similar to the other things that are already in the village. There are...
So we'll take a vote. David, you're okay, right? You guys take a vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So we're going to go 4-0. Thanks for that. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
So I think we're going to take it. There were no questions in the meeting before.
No, not at all. Straightforward.
I mean, I quickly read through it, but I didn't see anything in there that had any specific questions, because that doesn't mean I won't come back to you later.
That's... I think you've probably all heard about it, I think, already several times.
For the most part, but it was a nice report, and I appreciate you submitting it.
I do, I do have a problem...
I would have your legally required to do this.
Isn't it common how much training you guys do, or Chuck does? I mean, there's a lot of training.
Well, let's see, for Chuck, too, that includes his required architectural training. For me, that included, you know, her real estate training.
Right.
Then for me, they have special leadership meetings once a year in addition to the usual Chester County, which you have a training. So, yeah, there's a term under the title.
I mean, I know you might do it for other reasons, but it just makes you more valuable to us. So that's, it's a big plus.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors accept an extension of time to the review clock for the Able subdivision through October 17, 2019.
I'll second that.
Seconded by David. This, we most of all know what this is about. This guy's had this subdivision plan for a long, long time. He's got $60,000 invested in the thing, and he doesn't want to lose it. We review, we do it occasionally, and I don't see any difficulty for us doing that. Is there any downside to doing this, Mark? We talked about it before.
No, not necessarily.
Is he putting effort out?
No, not really. He just doesn't want to lose the $60,000 in case he does something. I'd look at it and I'd say it's unlikely he'll eventually do anything, but that's only my opinion, not his, so...
Yeah, this is an access issue. He would need to put down finish security over at the plant recording. He doesn't want to do that, so...
Well, I don't think he's actually even finished it, has he, Sharon? Even the status of Mr. Eagle, it hasn't even gone...
No, great, it hasn't gone through recording or anything.
Yeah. And as he said, he may never do anything, but right now, because of the money, he has it tied up, and then he doesn't want to lose that should he change his mind.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries 4-0. What about you?
Do you want to review this before the motion?
No, I think, I think we can put the motion out there and then discuss the thing.
Okay.
My sense is that Pete can talk this out on this thing.
Pete can give us a shirt of a cape or something? Okay. All right, I'll make the motion first. I make the motion that the Board of Supervisors authorize the advertising, the advertising of the MS4 permit, TMDL, and PRP plans as submitted by the Township Engineer for a public review period to June 19. So that's two months, 2019, and ultimate approval by the Board of Supervisors at the June 19, 2019 Supervisors Meeting.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Nancy, Nancy.
Nancy, second.
Nancy seconded. I saw that, I heard something.
All right.
And any discussion?
Just to think the last meeting, we had a couple of meetings where we really beat this thing up. I was pretty concerned about us committing ourselves to something. As it turned out, I'm not sure that's much of a worry because the regulatory agency seems to change the rules whenever they want to. So I'm not sure that there's any downside to just kind of the department we have right now as defined. Pete, you can kind of tell us what you did. You did an upgrade.
Sure.
Without, without getting too...
Okay, Pete, before you start, I'm assuming everybody at the Board here has, obviously, you can't memorize every page, but we've all been up to speed. And I had a lot of time put into this, just to see what we're doing. I don't think there's much that we can do, but it's good to know about.
Yeah, I think generally, the discussion was that we changed the focus to more trees, more tree planting versus stream restoration and basin improvements.
I think the big thing is that you exclude, that you put in the proposal about how we can take the agriculture out of the discussion, and whatever needs to be done to manage that would be done separately. So I think that's, that was the big improvement.
Right.
And then you went on to put options that are more commensurate with a lower number.
Correct.
So that just seems, the tree planting seems to be the easiest way to satisfy the need requirements of the DEP, although I'm not sure to provide the best, the best remediation or remedy to the problem. But that's not necessarily where we are.
Agreed.
Check their boxes.
Just looking at this thing way back, this is about a couple of years ago when we first started looking at this. The estimate for the stormwater was not a minor item. It was estimated to be $2 million over 10 years, which is $200,000 a year. I don't think that that's going to realize to those numbers, but we're still up against some fairly heavy numbers.
It's right. What did you say, Joan?
Well, based on estimates that I got from Shane Morgan, and again, they're just estimates, that to do tree planting that would cover what Pete says, you know, that we said that we need to remove, it would be in the $50,000 budget, which is a lot less than $189,000, $190,000 for stream restoration. And that's not accounting grant money, because Shane seems to think that he gets some grant money to help with the trees.
And we would have to maintain any of these tree plants? We'd have to maintain these for so many years?
Well, she recommends it to plant for like two years. She says if you can keep them going for two years, then they're usually pretty good. And again, we learned that it's all in how they're planted, the pattern that you use, because it allows them more to go through very quickly, and it's not expensive to take care of. We learned that over when we did...
Goodwin, yeah.
What we heard.
We've got the key learnings built into Franklin.
Yes.
I think a takeaway for us, and something that I would call a key learning, is so what we've been doing and what we're doing, which is fine, is kind of hitting the bare minimum. But that kind of fit us last time around, because even though they keep changing the rules, you know, you can either kind of take a, let me do the absolute minimum, or let me kind of take this to heart and do as much as I can, spending as little money as possible. And so I think if we take a strategic view going forward, there may be times when we can kind of build into things the perspective, whether it's a preservation project or whatever else, so that then we don't end up in kind of crisis moments where we'd have to spend a lot of money to kind of create a plan that they're going to accept until the next time, even if they won't, you know? And then you just, so one is kind of a philosophy, and the other is, let me check the boxes. I think we're doing a fine job checking the boxes. Longer term, we may find that it's actually more financially advantageous to take a more strategic view.
Joan, I think you're trying to do that. I remember talking at the Stamps meetings, there's some projects you say that if we do this, it could help us with dammes for. So maybe we need to go for that.
Right, well, and also Shane has told us about a resident, a property owner who she's working with to do some tree plantings from another program, but we need credit for that. So there's things like that, if we can...
You're capturing those.
Yes, talk to individuals who are doing that.
It makes us look better, so then when they do go around and decide who's played nice and who hasn't, I think it gives us a little more credibility.
Well, even with the tree plantings, if we did do everything that Pete laid out, we would be, we'd actually be over the requirements.
Overgoing the agricultural and the non-agricultural?
No, the needs after the agricultural.
Gotcha. I'm making that assumption that that's...
So that may come back to bite us, and then we'll have to spend more money, but that's okay. It's just that's the approach we're taking.
Wait, Pete, do you, how can they make us control something that...
They're already doing it.
I know, but the conservation...
We've already seen what they can do.
The conservation is already doing that. I mean, we have no...
I mean, just for everybody's information, we had gone through a lot of trouble to submit a permit to the DEP for this thing. They provided classes and training to our engineers on how they wanted their permits to be prepared. We put a lot of our own engineering money in complying with their requirements, and we submitted the permits that were in compliance with what they wanted. They received them all from all the townships, and they rejected them all, essentially changed the rules, and now we're resubmitting to come out under some different circumstances.
And each time we do that, I mean, we have spent, I think Joan told me, over $70,000 in consulting.
Oh, yeah.
Not to pick on you, Pete, but, you know, the more times we have to go back and recreate everything, the more money we have to spend, so...
I think the other kind of observation is there are kind of three things, three classifications of things we can do. One was reworking the basins, the retention basins. And they weren't just scraping them out. They wanted some design of a processing facility in the basin. The other was stream restoration, essentially. You are reshaping the bank and changing the slope so that you don't generate erosion on banks. And then the third one is the tree planting. But the tree planting is probably the least risky in terms of whether destroying your, both the basins and particularly the stream restorations were extremely vulnerable to a hotter air storm or a series of hotter air storms that we've had. So from a pure risk standpoint, the tree planting has got a lower risk. It's just kind of just some points I want to make.
You make a good point, Joan, because it's not only do you have to do this, but you have to maintain it. And I think you emphasized that, at least in my reading of this. Like, that's more emphasized in the second document, and I think it's high open to all of us. I mean, we have, it has to be maintained, or else we're going to start over again because we had that commitment to do this.
The maintenance is tough. We even had, at Goodwin, it's really tough because the space and the trees weren't planted well. But the thing that's getting us down there are the vines.
Well, again, because the mowing was so difficult that it, to be honest, it wasn't maintained enough because it was so expensive to mow it. Where if we, if we learn from that, and when we do these plantings, doing it in a way that, like I said, the doors need to zip through, then it's not a lot to maintain, and then we can keep after the vines.
The vines are the biggest threat with them, because in reality, I look at Goodwin. It's unique. I don't, the other areas, not like that at all. It seems like the vines and the invasive trees, these are stronger in weather. We're trying to drive around there. So I'm not sure we're going to actually win there, but we're working at it. We're working hard at it. So anyway, the tree planting looks good for me. Pete, you can probably just give us a few words here, but...
Yeah, so again, we've talked about a couple of things, but to summarize, the biggest change from last month to this month would be the yellow color, having the language provided as part of the white clay creep relative to the agricultural and how that can be managed. We're not excluding it, but we're saying that needs to be managed in a different, in a different method and format and not on the township's person, let's say, in that way. And as you indicated, Joan, the original submission had nothing opposed with it. And I think a lot of municipalities tried that same approach, and that was basically rejected by DEP across the board. So the second submission, as we'll call it going in, has something in it. Whether that's ultimately approved, as yet to be seen.
If they, they'll take some significant time to review this because you're going to get them all at once, just like before. So if they reject this permit, then what's the timeline for resubmission? None, or they specify what you have to do?
I think, I'd have to see the original letter, but we've gotten several extensions because again, as you've indicated, this has always been an evolving, moving target of rules and regulations. So we've asked for several extensions. I think, what was our original letter, David? Was it June 18 or something? Or was it November?
It was later than June.
Okay. It was like mid-last year.
August, I believe, was something happening.
We've had an eight-month to get to this point, where I'm sure your letter says probably they want a resubmission within 90 days, but that was just unrealistic, as they're still having the seminars to talk about stuff and some of the definitions that they have, so...
So I assume in a rejection letter, they would indicate when they want a resubmission?
Right. And then we'll see what it is. But they'll have the opportunity to either A, approve it, or B, if they don't like something about it, they would be able to pin that down and say, well, this we don't like. So that's at least avoids hopefully the moving target, which we can all appreciate. Because there's been a lot of that between the original and this submission here. So there is, and I think, Joan, you said it before, some of these rules are vague, exactly how this is evolving. But, so there is some uncertainty going with it, but it will at least, we'll meet the deadline for submission, and we'll see what comments we have. We don't know whether that'll take a month. It could take six months to get a review. We'll just have to wait and see. There's, obviously with the staff level, we'll work out a couple of things. There was a sample advertisement. That maybe we have that date, date in it and we'll review that with Mark and the staff and when that goes in the newspaper. So what would ultimately come ahead? And let me go back to what Donna was saying. We've tried to lay out within the narrative, which is the main part, that we can control all the calculations and the math. There's not much we can really do with that, as you can appreciate. So we've tried to offer flexibility. I didn't want to pin the township down with only one option. So I think it's a matter of at the time. So from a, I think you get a lot of public support for tree plantings. There's a lot of good effort for that, but also it's not heavy on design costs. So to make up for some of, you know, you may have, when we mentioned Nancy about all the costs that are involved. If you add in the stream restorations, detention basin retrofits, you have a heavy on saw costs to deal with all that stuff. The tree plantings doesn't seem to have that with it. And obviously, we're working with conservancy a bit. There's also maybe some grant funding available with that. So there's a lot of possibilities and that was brought to the table by Shane and I guess both Ellen and Joan. There's a lot of conversation with that. So assuming you're okay with the plantings, that seems like the rules we try and go approach may not move the needle as much as you want, but it makes the checkbox, as you indicated. So what's ahead, obviously.
Pete, can I just, because I keep on, I just keep on repeating this. I want the board to realize, we have two projects going on. So not only, and I know we've been spending a lot of our time on the total maximum level, because that's where the maximum effort.
The bigger one.
Right, that's where we have a pretty large sediment reduction we have to plan, and that's where we're looking at doing a lot of the tree planting.
Right.
But in the pollution retention plan, I just want to be transparent. There is basin retrofitting is part, is one of some of the options.
Correct.
And also doing some stream restoration is also part of the option. So it's not a big, it's a bigger deal. It's not as much as it would be. But I'll let you clear that we are proposing that at a smaller level.
You have two things. The PRP is, I'll say, only tough. It's a lot smaller in scale than what the sediment limit reduction is. However, as Joan and I have discussed at length, you're really limited because the land you own there is minimal. The available public land is minimal. It's not either, you know, federal reserve or within the urbanized area. So it locks you down as to what you can do there. So a little bit tougher, but same concepts apply. There are a little bit different rules, but the same general principles apply there.
Just to clarify, it's two watersheds. It's the Christina River and what, the White Clay watershed. White Clay, Christina, Chesapeake, Big Elk. So the Big Elk is a little bit of trouble. White Clay is a lot more.
So where we go from here would be, with the advertisement goes in the paper, there'll be a book here that Sharon will have that the public could commit and look at. And then people would be able to provide written comments to you in a letter if they're interested to do that or they can show up at the next public meeting on June 19. And there could be some discussion there. So after that, you obviously have some time between now and then to look at it more yourself, if you would have some questions. It's not the final document, like it needs. If you wanted some changes, you can do that. But public may have some good comments. And whether they necessitate changes or not, I'm not sure. But we would obviously be able to provide a response about what each question is and that we have to provide that to DEP, just like any public comment period would go with it. And then ideally, so I'm giving us maybe two weeks to allow for little updates or anything that may occur out of the June 19 meeting. So I would think the target is by the end of June would be what we can submit physically to DEP. And at this point, the time extension we had on hand that we requested until the end of the month, we only for some reason got it for June 15. So while I will fire back, if the motion is approved tonight, I would email Beth at DEP and say, hey, here's the plan that Franklin has adopted in terms of the schedule. And we would plan barring some catastrophe to be able to submit by the end of the month in June. And that's going to require a two-month extension and just kind of get that overlooked now so she knows it's coming. And I think that was the understanding when we had conversations with her.
Well, she granted us two months, right?
Yeah, we requested, I think, three or four originally. She only came back with two.
But we're going to what, miss it by a couple of days or something?
It's June 15. So your meeting on the 19th. So this whole, unless you wanted to run a public meeting, a special meeting, and that was discussed, and we're not.
Just to send a religious letter to her. She's going to be thrilled.
No one's going to spend four days.
She's going to be thrilled.
Something like this.
So the June, the June meeting, we should, we should send out.
Right, so the target for the June meeting, you'll have exceeded the 30 days, but it's just the way this falls because we didn't have 30 days between this meeting and the next meeting with advertising, just the way.
Yeah, I think if you explain it in the letter, they're probably fine.
She's been very reasonable before. I can't see why we're this close to the finish line or why we DQ, as I'll call it. So that would be my opinion to do it that way. So we'll send that email. I'll copy Joan on that, I'm sure. I'm hopeful they don't get to see that wisdom. So again, at the meeting on June 19, we would have some, and hopefully written comments we'd have ahead of time. We can inventory what those may be. If a lot of people come in, we would have to react, have a little less time to react, obviously, to that, to hear their comments and go from there.
Because we have the May meeting too, we can also take some comments at that meeting so that you could have time to.
Right, maybe we could retool the ad a little bit to say if you want to make comments at the May meeting, you're also able to do that.
And we ought to put it on the agenda for May meeting for a short discussion by board and a public comment.
If anybody would have it just for MS4, given the time you have. So the more public time, the, because it's not May, the DEP won't frown upon that. There, you're exceeding the minimum.
I'm really not expecting a whole lot of public response in this thing.
We'll see where it goes. So that, that's really the long and short of it. I can get into a lot more detail, but I think we hashed that out enough before. If there's any questions from the audience members or.
Yeah, Brent's family, I'm a resident of Franklin Township. The TMDL, is that, is that reduction measured? Or is it just calculated and then you do X, Y, and Z and you get a credit for that?
There's a specific, I'm sorry.
It's all calculated at the end.
Yeah, there is a specific, based on, and again, I don't have Glenn here, my right-hand guy, who did all the calculations. But at the end of the day, there is a specific pounds per year that we would have to reduce by. So that was a calculated based upon the urbanized area and factoring in existing BMPs, et cetera, et cetera. And we get to some number and then take out the, for the ag-rant exclusion at this point. So I, we have a tonnage, which I want DEP ultimately to agree upon. That's, that's one set. We have a tonnage. The second discussion is.
Our goal is to actually go back out, measure the tonnage?
No.
And, okay, so it really is just calculated after, after the fact?
Yes, it's just calculated.
If the trees aren't as effective as they hoped them to be, it's not being measured anyway. It's just based off of.
Right, and now, they make a lot of measurements streams, but in terms of, again, Joan and I have talked about this, taking more, you know, your hands are tied. We're not allowed to go sample the stream ourself and then go do some BMP and measure it again and hope and say, we've done it. The other upstream communities could be impacting us or vice versa, we've done all our part. So we're not allowed to do that. So this is checking the box. I know that may not be the right way to go, but we're trying to meet the test of each different BMP gives us a certain percentage, as you're aware. So based on the acreage of drainage coming into that, you get so many pounds per year for that feature, this feature. And you could do one feature, you do a combination of features, whatever you have available to you, and you magically get to this number.
But Brent, the DEP did go back and do actual testing because I think they said our actual numbers did go down the last go-around, but not enough. So somewhere in that whole report, I read that. So there is some real-world, you know, testing we do later.
But that's DEP. Yeah, DEP's doing that. It's not like they can come up with your own plan. You manage it, they've given the parameters to us.
They rate the performance of DEP, the BMPs. And then you select them out of this catalog of issues and you come up with enough.
You come up with an agreement of what you're going to do and then at some point, it's, you go back out and measure and see where you're at.
That you've alluded to before. And then over the last four or five years, we've met, attended a lot of meetings on stormwater and sediment control. And when you ask those questions about performance and measuring.
I do, I do have one other question and that is related to steep slopes along our roadways. The township has a lot of areas where we have erosion that occurs along the roadways. And then in heavy rains, it'll wash out soil and it puts, you know, rocks and dirt onto the road, which is kind of a safety issue. So is there, is there a credit for stabilizing steep slopes like that? Because along the roadways, we'd have pretty good access and it would probably improve the safety of the roads if we could do something. But I don't know if they have anything available for us to.
I'm going to say that it's a valid point, Brent, but from a MS4 standpoint, what we need is drainage area passing through something to make it any value at all. So if we just have a 10-foot section of steep slope, if there's not 100 acres of watershed coming over that hill to it, it isn't moving the needle. So as a practical matter, yes, I agree with you. If you can do those areas, I'd point them out to the staff and they can be addressed. But from an MS4 standpoint, we need drainage area to make, make it valuable, unfortunately. So I'd say no, it's not in there for that reason.
Just looking at the weather we've had in the last year, we've had an enormous number of storms, some close to 100-year storms right through one right after another, and it created enormous drainage problems in the township. We've got three or four property owners coming in here complaining about issues on their properties. Just a point of information, we're getting a lot of response from neighbors about drainage issues that haven't been there. You put a good bit of time in there.
Thank you. Okay, sure.
You said you put a good bit of time in reading.
Well, I read it and just want to make sure everybody else is all on the same, at the same level. And it's, it's a little frustrating when things change, but I don't know that there's much we can do.
Whatever they require, we're going to have to do it. Oh, really, that's going to be the answer. They have, they have authority over the townships and they exercise that authority, so.
So I don't think receiving a review letter is a unreasonable thing, but at least we'll see what we get and we'll know.
Well, we're not the only ones making the change on the agriculture.
Right, that was, you're part of that seven, six or seven other townships. So I'm not sure what they're doing. But again, they may be sitting back and doing nothing. The decision we discussed, I think, was let's meet a deadline versus not meet a deadline. I think there's something to that.
Has anyone talked to PSATs about what townships are doing? Do they have any recommendations?
Well, there's, PSATs is one, I mean, that covers, you know, every municipality. So I mean, we work in, we have probably a dozen of these going to different townships in various forms. Some are much simpler than others. Some only have a PRP, some have, you have both, unfortunately. We try to get out of the PRP. But that was rejected, you may recall that too. And again, the census didn't end with the 2010 compared to 2000. And it'll get, it'll change again with 2020. When that comes out, that's going to impact something too. So again, this is a multi-hurdle race, just never, it's never. Stormwater's going to be the only thing, and I'm sure Brent will attest to this, that's always changing. Everything else seems to stay the same in engineering land. But stormwater is this evolving. It's half-science, half-art to some degree, but.
So the 12 townships, or the 12 townships you're working with, how many have chosen to exclude the agricultural?
I think you're going to be the first one to go in with that. We're going to see how, some other townships don't have a lot of that. Some, it doesn't move the needle. You have moved the needle quite a bit on. And again, you're part of the consortium. I'm pointing on that way because that's where Joan and Shane sat next time, not to criticize her. But that's where, that was the big push. So theoretically, everybody else, if you're consortium, is going in with that for your TMDL. That's my understanding.
Well, I believe Lundgren Grove is going to take that same approach. West Grove Pearl doesn't have ag lands, so they can't. They can't do that, so.
What are Lundgren and Merton's doing?
They're not in a consortium and they travel different paths.
So it's like if you want to borrow, if you're a teenager, you want to borrow the car that night from your parents, until you ask, you don't know. So I'm going to take that approach. Let's ask, it's the least we could get away with, right? It's the least you could do. If they come back with a review letter and say, you know, well, we don't think the reduction's okay, that's fine, then we'll say we're going to lock in that tonnage we have, not the reduction. And we just have to do a little more tree planting, a little more this. So at least, I think this answer, or this submission will give us an answer one way or the other.
Okay.
And some things in another column.
It puts us a step closer in.
Yes, that would be my approach.
We know it's not the end, but it's.
Correct. So I don't want to dissuade you with that.
Big step in the right direction.
That's, that's my.
Again, I kind of love it. I mean, this is, this is life. This is, this is life of break Victoria Thorns. It's very, very, that's what they do. They comment. And you respond and then they comment. But you, but like you said, you're going to lock certain things down[1498.18]
But like you say, you're going to lock certain things down, and we're going to progress.
That's the goal.
And then the weather changes.
The way you lock up the population has got to change because of the census.
Just for everybody's information related to this agricultural thing we're talking about, it's related to the level of control that we have over the lands. The agricultural lands already have some control over the Biden DEP. Most of the farmers have an agreement with the Chester County Conservation District about how they manage runoff and how they plow their fields and how they manage that. And the, a conservation district is the enforcement arm of the DEP. So the DEP already has control over these farmlands. So we're taking exception to the fact that we should be responsible. Is that fair characterization?
So do we need to know, or?
Yes, there's a motion on the floor, it has been seconded, and we've had discussions. Is there any further discussion? Anything anybody else wants to add? In that case, let's have a vote. All those in agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, 4-0.
Pete, thank you for all the work you've done. This is an enormous technical effort now.
We'll work with the staff, we'll get it out the door.
And Joan, sorry, just because London Britton's not in our consortium, what does that mean? I assume they still have to follow all the same principles?
They tried to get out of it, okay? And I just know they're not working with us, Nancy, so I don't know exactly where they stand with everything, but I know they went to the, you know, tried to say that they don't have.
An e-senior?
Well, no senior in the township. Okay, whatever. Yeah, thanks.
Pete, thank you. With the next discussion, you probably have to get into involvement.
Okay.
You've got a long drive to go.
You're coming to the May meeting?
It's your choice. If you'd like me to make.
Let's see what level, what single level of ownership is not brought to public.
Thank you.
See you.
I had some extra.
Don't forget asking.
Okay, yeah, I just had four or five of them here. The purpose of the next discussion is really to update the board and our attorney about the status of the comprehensive plan related to various zoning issues. Myself and Nancy and Joan have been heavily involved in this zoning issue based on the, and based on the last meeting, we were looking at using a consultant to help us out, and we didn't go that way. We did get some help from the Chester County Planning Commission. It was pretty good. So I've got some notes here that you can kind of pick through. And I'll just kind of hit them one at a time, and then we can stop and talk about them. Nancy's got some information and I have information. And as I said, Mark, you haven't been involved in this thing, the supervisors have gotten copies of meeting summaries and things like that, so I'll ask you about some questions, some things as we get through it. If you have questions, just dig right in. Joan's currently conducting some research into the cost of producing the current 2006 comprehensive plan and the 2009 review. And she will have her report back, will come later for our references. Various grants were obtained for this, I'm going to re-read this, it's not looking well here. Were obtained to get that current plan. The initial, my initial overview indicates that the process will be costly to Franklin, and some of the costs and budget planning will be necessary, but there should be some grant money to help us out. We've got some indication from Chester County Planning Commission, and we'll come onto this VPP thing. The overview, we're going to need paid professional services from planners and attorneys. That's just the complication of it, because looking at, we did, Joan did go through all the old, and Joan and Sharon went through all the meeting notes and minutes from the board when they approved the first plan, so we've got a pretty good stack of paper that explains that process, even an idea what they might have went through in producing that thing. I saw a number in there, $44,000, so I don't know whether that's our cost without the grants or whatever. Anyway, the cost issue Joan's going to come up with, but overall, this is not a low-cost Since the last board meeting, there have been numerous events that have increased our understanding of the issues and provided some indication of a potential path to remedy. On April 10th, Joan, Nancy and I met with Chester County Planning Commission, and the summary will be viewed later in this document. Co-current to that general information discovery, I attended a series of three zoning classes presented by the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Education Institute at West Chester University. These were presented by instructors who are certified AICP credentials for planning. David Ward was one of the instructors. He's very familiar with Franklin Township because he worked, he worked most of his career for Chester County Planning Commission, and he spent some time at Franklin, doing a lot of work with Jeff Eastburn here, well-appointed. All the instructors are very helpful and provided recommendations before, during, and after the class. Some of the issues were discussed in class as course material, but focused on issues related to Franklin. They were interested in some of our issues, and as the learnings came up, we did discuss some of them. So it was a thing, downloading information, and I've got some of those notes in here, and they're kind of scattered around. And just a word about the American Institute of Certified Planners. It's a nationally organized, a nationally recognized organization that provides certification for planners requiring professional experience and an examination. Its process is similar to the professional engineer's process for certification. In addition, our attorney are important to our process because it provides the fundamental credibility. So really what the conclusion of this is, it's a complicated plan. You need the credibility of certified planners to help it with this, and you need the assistance of our attorney. One of the recommendations, we'll talk about this a bit as we go on, but I want to put it out right at the beginning, one of the recommendations we received from the various sources is to explore the possibility of a regional comprehensive plan within adjoining municipality. I've received some positive feedback from the Oxford Region Planning Commission and London Grove Township. And there is a map here, colored map, that shows the relationship of Franklin to those two entities. We adjoin London Grove Township on our northern boundary, and we have joined Elk Township on our southwestern boundary. And our connection to this Oxford group would be through Elk to East Nottingham and Oxford, or Oxford. So those are the two partners, potential partners that assist us in this regional And I've got a section, we'll talk more in detail about that. Just some, there's some notes I just put out here, just general information. Some key legal points about the comprehensive planning and zoning office, zoning ordinance. There's no legal basis for the statutory or statutory obligation to update the comprehensive plan every year. The basis is for planners, planners recommend this as new statistical information comes forth in the census, which is every 10 years. And typically, that's when you get a download of new demographic information, and that's what's kind of set the 10-year thing for the comprehensive plan. So it's not required by a statutory standpoint, but it's an important document in the whole process. It's a really important document. I didn't understand that until fairly recently, because it, the comprehensive plan pulls the whole zoning ordinance together and provides the explanation of why you did what you did. So we'll leave more discussion about that later.
Just a point of reference, the MPC says that the board shall consider updating. It doesn't say you shall update the comprehensive plan. All you need to do is stay in.
Yes. In reality, after what I found out lately, do this.
Do you have to come and do it?
You do. Well, you don't, you're not, the point I'm going to make is it's not a statutory obligation, but when you start to understand it, we'll see why we.
Why it's important to do it.
Right, so depending on the changes in the community and the land uses, that may necessitate change.
But there is a legal obligation with the zoning ordinance of municipality to continuously and proactively provide a fair share obligation and not provide any exclusionary configuration that is in the de jure or de facto. Those are two legal terms that, I'll just quickly define, Mark, you can help me out. De jure is a, is a process where you essentially exclude a particular zoning function, particular use. You either exclude it or you prohibit it. The de facto is a little more subtle. That's where you allow it on the face of your ordinance, but effectively, you prohibit it because of various circumstances and the character of it. You may zone somebody to do something, and it's in the middle of the lake or something like that, and that's an extreme example, but that's how it's done, so.
John, it's a better explanation than I could have offered.
Okay, all right. Just a couple of comments about the existing comprehensive plan. I've read it a couple of times, and there's a lot of it, and it's a huge book, and I've got behind it. Existing plan is historically outdated. All maps, tables, and charts do not contain any new data since 2006 to 2009. As a minimum, these components need to be corrected with new data and demographics. The objective stated in the plan needs to be reviewed and updated to make the zoning ordinance consistent and logical. That's an important point, we'll talk about that a little more. And new objectives may be appropriate, and prior objectives may be supersede or irrelevant. That's really the review, is to fix up all the tables, look at the current objectives, see if they're still valid. Some may just be invalid, just based on changes that happen. So that's, that's the real work of the comprehensive plan. So just going on, we also, we know that we have a couple of zoning issues related to high density and our SU district. So this is my primary objective, and I'll, is to correct any zoning deficiencies and update the comprehensive plan in a manner that protects Franklin Township from curative amendments and other legal challenges to our zoning plan. The revised plan must be robust in its resistance to these challenges. And the plan must be, these three words are important, orderly, logical, and consistent. And if I, I just got a list of things that it can't be, because I was doing a lot of reading and I started to jot those things down. The plan must not contain any shadow of the following negative characteristic: plan's not consistent, arbitrary, exclusionary, de jure, de facto, tokenism, selective admission, effectively restrict population to near level, near current levels, and prevent newcomers. So if somebody's challenging your zoning plan, and any of these factors and probably others are detected, then you're at risk to be, at risk of a successful challenge, so. I'm not sure I want to get involved in the details of the TND or the SU, because I'm just kind of quickly paraphrase the TND. The TND is this traditional neighborhood development. It's a 126-acre partial that we have, that currently exists along 896 on the left side and southbound, if you make the turn in Kimblesville. It was originally scheduled for this TND zoning, which was a high-density kind of neighborhood. It was designed around a concept that developed neighborhoods in Philadelphia back into the 20s. Essentially, these were houses, fairly close houses. It was parking on the street, no parking up front, they had porches on the front, and they were typically row houses. The access to properties were through a back alley, and the back alley had a driveway and garage usually under the house. And you could park one car in the driveway and one car in the garage. I grew up in a neighborhood like that in Philadelphia. That's the TND. So the township had spent a lot of time setting up that district, and it was the developer who owned it, and he formed a kind of coalition with four other developers to develop this piece of land, Ford Farm, the Mackey, Prop, Mackey Farm, and others. So there were four developers involved. And of course, this required sewer plant, so the idea was to have sewer plant provided by the developer for this facility and others, and they're also going to pick up sewage for the village, Kimblesville. Economics came into play, 2007, the subprime mortgage market collapsed in 2007, early in 2007, and that pretty much stopped most of the housing development. If you look at, and I'll have that chart handed in, if you look at the development of Franklin Township, with new housing starts going all the way back to 95 through the current, you'll see a drastic drop in the development of the township after 2007. Anyway, all these developers eventually went bankrupt. The last one to be viable in the township owned a TND, it was a developer named Hamler, and he proposed back in 2013, Joan, we had a meeting in your, in Mark's office, he wanted to sell us the property for two, for $2 million plus $100,000 in closing costs. Township really didn't have that kind of money. He wanted out of it. He didn't really want to develop this any further, and he wanted out. So he made a deal with Chester County Conservation Group and preserved the land with an ag easement. And he received compensation for that, township was not involved in that. And eventually sold the three pieces of land as ag. Three ag operations going on, and now we have.
Supervisors worked really hard to delay the development, and I'm sure anyone who's around then knows that. So it didn't just happen. I understand the story, John, but I also want to give credit where credit is due.
They put a lot of effort into this thing, trying to develop it that way. I really don't know all the details because I wasn't involved in it.
They worked hard.
But ultimately, the economics just killed these projects. So we have three active ag operations in there. We've got the winery and vineyards out there, you can see those. Then the next property down is a guy raising sheep. And the last one, Matt Goines, got a black hankos operation in. So that stuff is all ag. It was originally scheduled as TND, which falls into the high-density kind of area. So we may have to rezone that thing AR, I don't know that yet, but it is AR right now, that in-function. But the important part is we lost this high-density component.
But there's really nothing that we should do until we go through the fair discourse.
No, 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 we're not going to do anything until we.
Work with the county.
Basically, we determined with O'Leary and his group, is that the comprehensive plan and these two zoning issues need to be resolved kind of in a parallel way.
Well, and so this is a subset, the zoning is a subset of the comprehensive plan, and just to help people understand, comprehensive plan is your strategic plan for your community. And so we don't want to do this separate from a comprehensive plan, where we include all the neighbors, we include people who have opinions, we get a sense of what people want in this community, what direction we want to go. It's how we develop the historical sections through previous comprehensive plans, as well as some of the preservation and trails. So it's a holistic way of looking at what we want our community to be. We have to tie it into the landscapes, which is Chester County's overall comprehensive plan. And then this becomes a part of it, because if you do need to rezone, you need to have community members understanding and discussing it. I mean, it can be a big deal if something has to be rezoned. So it's not like people, you know, in a room do this. This has to be broader than one person, broader than a few people, it's a community effort. And yeah, Mark, I agree that it doesn't have to be done, but it's just as in our own lives. If we want to know what direction we want to go, we have to spend time thinking about it and then setting manageable goals to get there. And I think that's what this is about, and that's why it's important to our community.
It's just, it has to be done, and I agree exactly, precisely what you said. It's also the document that provides the orderly, logical, and consistent component of the zoning plan.
So it's a decision.
The zoning plan has to force a law, so.
And as for today, there's no action required, it's just simply making people aware. The rest of the board weren't at the meeting with Chester County Planning Commission, so it's a chance for you to ask any questions. And then to John's point, now we kind of start to work with the county itself to.
We got some, I took some notes, and we had some pretty good key go-dos out of that meeting, so we'll get into that. I want to skip over the SU issue. We do have some issues in the SU district, but we really didn't talk to Chester County Planning about that. We didn't really get very involved in that.
Right, well, we may not need to until we find out, first of all, where we're at, and then whether we join a regional group. So if you join a regional group, it's a different conversation, so.
Looking at the meeting we had, which was actually turned out pretty well, the purpose of that meeting was to get some direction to correcting the various zoning deficiencies and update the comprehensive plan. And participating in the discussion was Brian O'Leary, he's the executive director of Chester County Planning Commission, somebody I've been acquainted with for about four or five years. Susan Elks, I met the first time I met her, she's the planning services director. And Glenn Bentley is a senior planner. We see his signature on a lot of, when we submit a plan, and Chester County Planning has to approve it, he usually assigns the plans. We've seen him. Joan, myself, and Nancy were there for Franklin. And I'll just, I've got a whole list of key discussion points, and we'll see if that fits into where we're going to go. High-density residential zoning area possibly is insufficient to satisfy fair share. Talk about fair share, that's it. The traditional neighborhood development zoning district is preserved ag, all properties are active in ag. The special use district, the development for this district has some characteristics that are unsuitable for the way, related to the way this develops. I don't want to say too much more. We did notice, I noticed this when I was going through the zoning book, that we have a zoning class called medium-density residential that's in the zoning book, but it is not designated in the plan. There's no NVR on this plan.
Do you have to have, do you have to have everything?
Well, I thought it was a big worry, but Brian didn't think it was much of an issue. That was my book, so I just, he said, we need to correct it, and I think Joan found out that they eliminated the zoning district. They took it off the map, but they didn't take it out of the book.
Chair of research, that, you've had that.
Was that what, that's what's happened?
Yes.
All right, so there's a, that's a more or less minor correction at some point that will come up in the process.
Yeah, we have the ordinance where they removed it, but it came out of the map and not put.
And then the comprehensive plan needs to update. There were the points that we put out there at the beginning of the meeting. Their recommendations were pretty interesting. And this came from Brian O'Leary, he's the exec. Said the township should explore the possibility of a regional comprehensive plan within joining townships. The one he mentioned was with Upper Oxford through an existing. The one he mentioned was with Upper Oxford through an existing agreement with Elk. Subsequently, I had some talks with London Grove Township and they're interested. Here's the basic advantage of this regional plan is that, and you want to partner with somebody who has a different kind of township or arrangement than you do. Say, for instance, you have to provide a certain amount of a zoning district and you really don't have enough. But if you partner with them, they may have some that they could share with you. And they may need something from you. So these regional plans are pretty effective for that purpose. They could help us out with our high-density residential and possibly our DSU issue. So that was a big upgrade for me. I had heard about these before, but never really, you know, studied it. Only many of us did, really. We talked about something called a municipal curative amendment. And we don't think this is required at this time. We don't feel that we have any pressure on the township related to these zoning issues. But this municipal curative amendment is one that the township uses to block a landowner's curative amendment for six months. As it's explained, I mean, Mark, you can correct me. But only for six months. It gives you some, it gives the township or municipality some breathing room if they get a challenge and they want to make some corrections. So that was put out to us, but we don't think we need it. It's currently not under pressure. Mark, you have any experience with that at all, that somebody actually did that?
One of our townships just did that last month.
Oh.
In relation to billboards. So you basically pass an ordinance declaring the provisions of the zoning ordinance defective, for lack of a better term. And then you have six months in order to remedy the defect, whether it's figuring out if the use should be permitted in another area or permitting more of the use. I can tell you that's the only instance that I've seen that done.
I assume there's a limit on how many times you can do this, right?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, if you go, if you're constantly going through the planning process of figuring out, you know, every 10 years, you shouldn't necessarily have to do it that often.
Yeah.
I am involved in two regional comprehensive planning areas. One's the Phoenixville, and then there was another one in Berks County where there were challenges to one of the municipality zoning ordinances. The good thing about being a region is that you can look to the partners in the region and courts are allowed to consider uses in other areas, other townships. And when you're looking at fair share and you've got a borough that has very high density, then Franklin Township or rural townships can look to those members of a regional comprehensive plan.
Both of the proposed municipalities that we're looking at, both have boroughs in it. The Oxford group has the Borough of Oxford is a big one. And then London Grove has West Grove and Avondale in there.
John, you had mentioned last night that you thought there would be a problem with going out of the school district. I wonder, Mark, if you...
Yeah, I've got a note here where I mentioned it. I mentioned this to one of the planners in a training class last night. And he was pretty pleased. Thought that was a really good idea to pursue that. But he did say that most of them, most of the regional agreements are always within a school district.
Well, I can tell you that I represent the Trowellstown Township, which is in the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Planning Group. And they have Phoenix School District, Downey Town School District, and Great Valley School District. So I think it's more in line with how does, you know, the more dense area interact with the areas around it.
I didn't have a lot of time to question, but I asked him. I said, "Why would that be?" And he says it's related to taxation. So something to look into further. Just a comment.
But I don't think it's a...
On the deal breaker.
We don't think it's a deal breaker. So one issue we have, and we talked about this, is the high-density residential zoning does need to be analyzed by a planner. And to be sure that it meets the requirements of fair share, and I'll talk about fair share. To determine whether you need the fair share is not a cookbook solution. Pennsylvania legislature mandates that townships must comply with fair share, which is meaning how much high-density housing you designate in your township. But they provide no specific guidelines, only that you shall do it. So that vacuum essentially led the courts to come up with a solution. So basically, how you determine fair share is based on case law, which is a complicated arrangement. I did find a document that outlined the basis for fair share. It sort of looks like a cookbook solution, but there's all kinds of subjective decisions that are made in the process that really need to be made by a professional planner. And just in defense of Mark here, I'll put this thing out. About a year ago, it was about a more a year ago, Joan and I asked you to tell us whether, how we determine whether we are compliant with fair share. And you sent us a letter sometime in March of last year. And it was a long letter with a whole procedure in there. And we read it and quite frankly, we didn't know what to do with it.
I wanted a yes or no answer.
So in rereading your letter and comparing it to this appendix, which outlines the process, you're in lockstep with that.
There are tests that the courts have determined, you know, certain steps you need to go through to determine whether or not you can impact growth. You know, it's like a five-part test.
Yeah, each one of those, it's not, you do this and you multiply something out and you get a number. It's not the way it comes out. And case law is a major factor in this thing, I guess. So this is a part that we need professional planning help. And I think it's one of our first path forwards to figure this thing out. The Chester County Planning Commission advised that they can offer technical services for a fee, much like hiring a consultant. Their staff effort to support Landscape 3 is winding down. And the Planning Commission's technical resources will become available possibly June, July. So there are possible source of technical workhorse, either them or some consultant.
Well, yeah, I think it's, they would be the first place I would go. A, because they thoroughly understand the county, especially through Landscape 3. They have no political or other motivations, not that planners do, but I think they're the purists. And they also said that they charge less than all the planners.
You're absolutely right. I got the same comment last night from the planners running this zoning class is that the county would be the most neutral party to help you. Politically neutral. They didn't define it. That's what they said. And just a point of information, the Chester County Planning Commission developed the complete comprehensive plan for Penn Township. And they're about ready to approve it for law. So they have done a lot of very extensive work for the townships. We talked a little bit about, we did talk about the calculation of fair share. That's not something for amateurs at all. So certainly a planner will help us out there. We're looking for Mark to oversee this activity and make sure that whatever we do is legal and appropriate.
Yeah, I think that we would work with a planner to come up with the best argument for whatever the planner wants to justify as a fair share.
It's a combination of planning and legal action here. Point I was making.
And this would be so that we can defend whatever the planner comes up with, if that were to be necessary.
That goes back to my original objective, is that the plan needs to be robust and resistant to challenges. So professional credentials are essential in developing a plan, both legal and for a plan. One interesting thing developed in that discussion. The high-density zoning district is defined on the zoning map. It's 221 acres, which is 2.7% of our township. During that discussion, it was discovered that Crosson Park Preserve Land was included in the high-density area. And the Chester County Planning Commission noted that we probably need to remove the 115-acre park and recalculate the high-density component. So we... They're correct. We're going to lose half of our high-density.
Was Lexington Point developed as a means of forcing some HDR on the township?
That's a good point. Because I was looking at the...
Because it's not in an HDR district.
It isn't. You're right. So it may be a component of the solution. Absolutely right.
But that was fortunately by the court, right?
That's correct.
That was an example of a curative amendment, just for folks here. A curative amendment is basically a challenge to your zoning laws by a landowner saying you have insufficient zoning class for what he wants to do. And if he can prove that you don't, because you've been exclusionary, you did some other things wrong, or you just don't have enough of it, they can be successful. That's what happened to us in Lexington Point.
Yeah, and for curative amendments, the applicant, the remedy would be something called site-specific relief. They would say, "You have a problem with density in the township. And you want to do something about it on this parcel. Why don't we have an agreement to do something with?" And the township can't say, "Well, you can do it over here." They get to do it on, you know, if they were to be successful in that curative amendment, they would have the ability to utilize the parcel that is proposed for their developer. And that's a negative because then you end up getting uses where you wouldn't necessarily want.
That goes back to why you would do this.
That's right. So, you know, when we lose, when we take that out of the calculation, we're down to like 1.3%.
But we can maybe do that.
Right. That's where the regional plan may come in. We may be able to get one of the boroughs to share some high-density with us if we engage this plan. Let's see here. There's a couple of charts back here that show the breakdown. You just look at those. I think we're getting pretty much near the end of this thing.
John, I think you've made the case.
I think most, I've covered most of the items in there. Let's see if there's something else that, a little bit more about the comprehensive, the regional plan. Last evening, I discussed this with David Ward. He's the zoning specialist. He's a supporter. I think I covered this already. Just another point, Franklin's already developed a working relationship with London Grove and Upper Oxford through the Cato Executive Board Network. I'm one of the Cato Executive Boards. So are supervisors from London Grove and Upper Oxford. Both of those supervisors are involved in these potential regional groups. Brian O'Leary, I've known him for about four or five years. He attends a lot of Cato meetings. We're well acquainted for various reasons. He was in there talking to us about Landscape 3 development and other issues in Chester County. So we have working relationship with the key people related to this regional plan. So I think that's kind of where we are, Nancy. We were there and, you know, we, these are just kind of scraps of information that I picked up in these classes and what we got there. So the purpose of this was to bring the board up to date and mark up the date. I think we've done that. We're not in a big rush. So it's, we don't have pressure. So we're going to kind of go slow here. But I think the key, primary, critical path item at this point is the fair share analysis. So see if we can get the county to help us out when we get some resources.
So, John, before Nancy brought up a point to this, I mean, particularly for the county, would that be a great opportunity just to start with an idea where they're at with their plan and how that comes into it? And then how, we start a big picture first? And then, and that would help us set up that we work with our comprehensive plan? And then, I know we have to do the fair share analysis, but maybe it becomes...
It's not going to occur to a problem within the June, July era because that's when those technical resources are available. We do have a working relationship with London Grove Township and West Grove Borough and four other municipalities. Remember, years ago, we developed a legal municipal agreement with those six municipalities to share costs for EMS service. Remember that formula we developed? Took us about two years to develop the plan. And then about another year to get all our attorneys. And I don't mean this in a critical way. We had six attorneys trying to agree on a plan. We felt we were close one time and then one in their East Township attorney bled all over the agreement. So it took us a while to get there. We did. But we, so over that course of time, we spent a lot of time working on each other. Six municipalities developing cost-sharing agreement wasn't an easy task. So we have a good working relationship with London Grove and West Grove. I don't know Avondale. I've never worked with them. But in my discussions with London Grove, they're looking at developing a regional plan, which includes West Grove and Avondale in there. If you look at the map, you can see that those two boroughs are within their, geographically within their township. So they're a potential partner.
So what's our next step?
The next step, I think, is to wait, is to stay with Chester County Planning and see if we can get them to work this fair share. If we can probably send them a note and just say, "That's our critical path and they know we're looking for someone."
Maybe that's something that Joan can be the contact person for that. Maybe Joan can be the contact person with them to keep up to date on what's going on. You sort of propose that? Yeah. I mean, I just assume as our manager, you're going to help us manage this.
We're talking to him. We're sharing all that information. All the emails are being shared. So everybody sees what's going on.
It's just good to have someone on point to say, "I'll check with them, you know, this week. I'll check on them next week," or until we get something back.
All right, I'll initiate it since I've got these contacts. I'll get it going. I don't know what other questions. There's a lot of information to put out.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, for getting started. Because I think, like you said, it's going to take a while, but...
This is a long process.
But we got people off and get going.
Yeah, we kicked over the rock now, so now we're...
But the time is good. The time's good with the county finishing their work, resource being available. And we're aware of these issues, so we can't climb under a rock anymore. We've got to...
No, no. Once you start the process, and we're out in public on it now, but we've got to be fairly daffed and moving along here. And not real fast, but we've got to have a process in place. So anyway, so that information's out there. If you have ideas or suggestions, we'll share that.
Well, John, I think, just back to what Nancy said, that we want to make this a, probably a larger group than just the board, right? At one of the townhouses.
Eventually, you've got to bring the whole community in our planning commission. And the Planning Commission usually is a major player in developing this comprehensive plan.
And I do think it's important that it isn't seen as political. So, I mean, I personally think Joan is the right person to be the focal point. We can all work with Joan and work through her. Obviously, John, you have relationships with people, have those relationships. But I think for a project management plan, I think Joan is the center of it. That's what I'm assuming we pay Joan for, is to lead projects.
We are the governing body and fully responsible, so just...
That's right. She's our project manager. Let's let Joan do her thing.
Let's see. We're down to public comment, I guess. Any further...
Stay for this, the whole meeting.
Whether that was interesting or not. Whether that was interesting or not, but we're down to public comments, so we'll put any comments on any other. Okay.
I want to quickly tell you that when it comes time to redo the history section of the comprehensive plan, that the longer history that's currently posted on the Franklin Township history site is in fact based on that, but updated and corrected, so it can still be forged back into the comprehensive plan.
Right. There's, I bet there are a lot of sections that will, you know, be like that, that maybe need a few little tweaks for there.
Yeah, I only would know anything related to that.
Yeah, that's right.
But that was the one, because it was most comprehensive history of the township that was available, but then it needed some, some, well, I give it some implication, but needs some correction and focus on this township from the point of view of settlement in Pennsylvania, whereas probably the earliest settlements actually came in from Maryland. And so, all these things have been sort of tweaked, so that it's a little more comprehensive with you.
Okay, I got just one other question.
I do have one comment.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to say thank you to the, the board for, for all the work that you do, and most recently, Walker Road is nearby by where I live, and I, I like to, to go for runs, and Walker Road is a scary road to run on, and some recent improvements along Walker Road have been huge. Increased the width of the roadway just by adding some stone and doing a little bit of grading, and last week, I was out there running, and it makes a huge difference to have the safety improvements on, on these back roads. So I just wanted to say thanks.
All I recommend is riding a bike or walking on these roads, or you're at some serious risk, so be very, very careful out there.
But, but John, we take pride in the fact that we have a consistent plan.
But we don't have a walkable community, we've got roads that have to be careful on.
With a lot of trails, which is a real blessing, and a lot of gravel road, so we certainly have a very hiker-biker welcoming community. But yeah, roads are roads, and maybe there are crazy drivers.
Yeah. Now, let's see, one last quickie item. We had, Saturday, we had our spring cleanup here, and we did get a real big turnout. Started at eight o'clock, but at seven o'clock, it was still raining. May have had a damming effect, and I thought, okay, well, I was here about 11:30, nearly 12:00, and, but the next day, I got a call from a guy in London Grove Township, or New London Township, and he runs their cleanup program, and they ran it the same day as we did. And he advised, he wanted to coordinate the efforts in the next year, which I thought was a good idea. And he indicated he had a lot of people up there, and if he had known we were looking for people, he'd have sent them down here. But he didn't. So, we determined there should be some, there's some significant benefit here in planning this together and coordinating it in the future, so we picked the same day. Anyway, that's just the two things for that year. Okay, any other public comments? Here are none, meeting is adjourned at?
Eight thirty-six.
Eight thirty-six, yeah.